I hope you had the opportunity to crack your windows at home today. It was gorgeous. But the time is seven thirty-one and this meeting of the city council is now going to be hereby called to order. At this time, in order to get that going, I'm going to ask that you remain muted. However, join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now with the pledge completed, I'm going to ask that members of the council go ahead and begin to unmute yourselves in preparation of the clerk calling roll. And so with that, will the clerk go ahead and call roll?
Mikhail.
Here.
Budmets.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Veneziano.
Here.
Bessetti.
Here.
Diastis.
Present.
Sanica.
Here.
That makes seven present and nobody absent. So there is a quorum this evening. Members of the audience, you're reminded that these proceedings are being recorded for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel. As always, a couple of quick housekeeping items to run through before we dive into the first items on the agenda. For one, public comment will be afforded to the public who are joining us on this conference line as long as you provide your contact information and the subject matter for which you'd like to speak about before the deadline as noted on the next agenda. Members of the public who may be present in the city council chambers listening to the meeting will also be afforded the opportunity to provide public comments. But that'll be in accordance with the procedures applicable to public comment at an in-person meeting of the city council, which is namely that the member of the public must have signed in prior to the start of the meeting, which is at seven thirty-one. Also, as always, written comments that were submitted prior to the meeting will be read aloud and addressed. With that point now, it looks like the first order of business is to approve minutes from previous meetings. And there are two sets of minutes for the council to approve. The first one is for the February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one committee of the whole meeting. With that, is there a motion by show of hand to approve these minutes? Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the first and Alderman Veneziano for the second on that motion. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to be made to these minutes? Well, seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bessetti.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, those minutes are approved. Just a quick reminder, please try and keep yourself muted when not speaking. I know that the council is running through the yeses and the yays and ayes, but there is some echo and some language in the background. Moving on, the next set of minutes are the February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one city council meeting. By show of hand, is there a motion to approve these minutes? Thank you Alderman Mikhail. Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to this set of minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bessetti.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, those minutes are approved. Scrolling down on monitor two so we can maintain continuity. There isn't anything for the mayor to report this evening. Are there any ward reports? Alderman Sanica.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was approached by the Creekside subdivision to get in touch with the Public Works operation superintendent. Thank you very much to Public Works for reaching out to the homeowners association president. And I also heard from a resident in Fairfax Village who inquired about potentially working with IDOT to erect a sound wall along Route fifty-three. And we and staff is currently discussing that that matter at this time. No additional, no additional items to report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Alderman Bessetti.
Yes, not, this item is not necessarily our jurisdiction, but I did get a call or two on it. Last week on Friday, there's a letter from the school district two fourteen regarding all the students going back to school. We have contacted the school district and they are supposed to be sending out a revised email to all the parents trying to clarify their original letter. Because there was a lot of questions on it. It made it sound like, you know, you, you, you have to come back and you don't really have much of an option. So for those residents that saw that and have not seen the revised letter, there should be a revised letter in your email. That's it.
Thank you for sharing. I hope that does help clarification for any residents who who may have had some misunderstanding from that. Thank you Alderman Bessetti. I'm going to go ahead and lower your hand. With that, are there any other ward reports? And if not, then we will move on to the items pending. The first item we have is line item A. It's ordinance number twenty-one dash one-one. And it's approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you Alderman Sanica. Thank you Alderman Budmets for the second. Is there any discussion by show of hand? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bessetti.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes, 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 yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes, yes, yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
That makes seven, seven, seven in favor and unopposed. This ordinance is adopted. This brings us down to line item B, ordinance number twenty-one dash one-two at this time. It's to amend the city code in order to reduce the number of Class A two and Class A three liquor licenses issued by the city of Rolling Meadows. The A two license is for Anna's Red Apple of twenty-one twenty-one South Plum Grove Road. And the A three is for Bigby's Poorhouse at sixteen forty-nine West Elgonquin Road. By show of hand, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you Alderman Budmets and thank you for the second on that Alderman Mikhail. By show of hand, is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bessetti.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, that ordinance is adopted. This brings us to line item C. It's ordinance number twenty-one dash one-three. At this time, it's to amend the city code in order to reduce the number of video gaming accessory licenses issued in the city of Rolling Meadows. Bigby's Poorhouse at sixteen forty-nine West Elgonquin Road specifically. Is there by show of hand a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you Alderman Sanica and thank you Alderman O'Brien for the second. By show of hand, is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sanica.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bessetti.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, that ordinance is adopted. This brings us down to line item D, ordinance number two-one dash zero-zero. It's to amend the city pay plan to create a part-time fire inspector. Now, this was postponed on the February ninth and then again on the February twenty-third city council meeting minutes. So for this, is there a motion to consider this ordinance for first reading by show of hand, of course? Thank you Alderman O'Brien. Thank you Alderman Sanica for the second. Is there by show of hand any discussion? Alderman O'Brien, I see your hand up. Is that legacy or do you want the floor?
I'd like the floor if I could, Mr. Mayor, for a minute. Good. Thank you. I'd like to actually make a motion to waive first reading on this since it's been to council several previous times, most recently twice in the past, and there's been no changes made based on additional meetings council had, as nor during the last. I think it would help staff with being able to get this position posted sooner than later with the upcoming retirement and vacancy there, as well as being able to leverage the potential cost savings that have been discussed and noted in past meetings too. So if I might be able to get a motion to waive the first reading, please.
Sure. Is there, so there's a lot of hands up here, so.
Let me drop mine. That'll take away one of them.
And then if I can just ask others to remove your hand and if you're going to make the second on that motion, then go ahead and put it back up, please. I see Alderman Bessetti. It looks like you're making the second on that. At this time, then I'll ask if there's any discussion on this motion to waive the first reading? It doesn't look like there's any discussion to waive the first reading. So at this time, we'll go ahead and call the clerk call the the vote on waiving the first reading.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bessetti.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this waives the first reading and now we'll bring this back around. Ordinance number two-one dash zero-zero, amend the city pay plan to create a part-time fire inspector. Is there a motion to consider this ordinance for second reading? Thank you Alderman Budmets. Thank you for the second Alderman O'Brien. Is there any discussion? Alderman Budmets?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick comment that for those members of the public who might be asking the, why is the council looking at adding a position at a time like this, that we've been assured that this will actually be a cost savings measure, that we will not be paying firemen overtime to do this instead of paying people. The person to do the job will be making less than firemen's wages to do this. And so there would be an overall cost savings in that, and that the city council is in fact looking for that savings and and wants to monitor to make sure that is the in the long-term effect of this hire. That's it.
Thank you for the context, Alderman Budmets. Appreciate that. Is there any further discussion? I'm going to lower your hand, Alderman Budmets. And if there isn't any further discussion, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call roll?
Budmets.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bessetti.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, this ordinance is adopted. This now brings us to line item E. It's ordinance number two-one dash zero-zero at this time. And it's to amend chapter two, article three of the code of ordinances to authorize the city manager to execute agreements pertaining to administrative zoning code matters. Is there by show of hand a motion to consider this ordinance for first reading? Thank you Alderman Budmets and thank you Alderman Diastis for the second. Is there by show of hand any discussion on this item? Alderman Budmets?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In discussions this week, I've seen out that this, this agreement would, or this, this would only be a very limited set of circumstances that this would only be an agreement regarding parking in multi-tenant buildings or properties in agreements between the city and multi-tenant property owners. And so when we, when we do approve this, it would be really nice if that were spelled out with a little bit more clarity in the wording of this. In addition, it would also be nice if we could require that the city manager provides the council notice of such an agreement being entered so that later it won't be a surprise to us if somebody says, oh, but I have an agreement with the city and that we would have no knowledge that this had been entered into. So if we could make a change, a slight change in the wording that just says that when, when in fact the city manager executes such an agreement, that he would provide the notice to council, then agreement has been executed within twenty-one days of being, of it being executed. And I was told that Joellen might be the person who might best be able to speak to if these, if these suggestions would in any way hamper the, the passage or the ability for the city manager to, to freely function under this, under this proposed ordinance.
First, thank you Alderman Budmets for, for bringing this up. So just for my clarification, are you requesting a motion to add additional language or parameters around, around this?
Yeah, I, I think it's required of me to do so. I can do, I can do that. It sounds like the first, the first thing that I'm asking for though is, is not really a change. It's just, it's just defining, making a better job of defining the scope of the, of the agreements that the city manager would be able to sign. And, and I've been being told that, that, that is the scope. It's limited to just that. And then if it needs to have an amendment or an addition to asking that the notice be required within twenty-one days of execution of agreement to provide notice to the city council in writing. If that needs to be an amendment, I'm willing to make that amendment.
Okay, thank you. So what I'm going to do is defer to Attorney Wolf here and see what, what the appropriate path forward is around your specifications and then around the parameters in detail. So Attorney Wolf, can you chime in for us here on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Okay, so essentially what Alderman Budmets is requesting, like you said, is clarity regarding the application of this city manager authority to execute these types of agreements. And so my recommendation that this, there would be an amendment required to this ordinance. And the amendment could simply refer to the provision of the zoning code that authorizes this administrative process. And so that, that would require an amendment in addition with respect to the notification to the council after the city manager has entered into an agreement on behalf of the city. That, that would also require an amendment to this ordinance here. So you might want to take those two matters separately so that the council can provide input in that regard. When Alderman Budmets and I were speaking on this matter earlier today, you know, I advised that we should probably have the input of Community Development Director Jo, Jo, Joellen Charlton with respect to the impact of these requested amendments from a legal perspective. I don't see any negative impact, but Joellen may want to provide some input as to how this may impact the administrative process.
Okay, sounds good. So here's what I'm going to do then. I'm going to ask that Alderman Budmets, you go ahead and, and choose one of the two, break them down and make your motion with the request for amendment. And after the second is received on your motion during discussion, then I'm going to ask for Assistant Director Charlton to, to chime in and, and share some of her specific subject matter expertise on that, if you don't mind, Alderman Budmets.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. If I could, I'd like to make the first amendment to this that we provide greater clarity and define the agreements that the city manager may enter into by citing the chapter and verse or whatever it is of the zoning code, which, which allows for, for this agreement to be entered into.
Okay. Thank you for that. Then Alderman Bessetti, I see you have your hand up. And if it's for the second, that's great. If it's not, please lower it. And then at discussion time, throw it back up here for the discussion component.
It's for the second. I, I heard most of what I wanted to hear, so.
Okay, thank you. Then thank you for the second on that. And now it opens up the floor here for discussion on this first motion for amendment for greater clarity and definition around the agreement. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, then we'll have the clerk call roll on this motion for the first amendment here. Oh, hold on, Alderman Sanica, I see your hand shot up. I'm sorry. Alderman Sanica?
I just wanted to make sure that is, is this the item that we would want Assistant Director Joellen Charlton to speak on?
Well, I don't know if she, you know, I was told that she had raised her hand if this is the one or if it's the latter. I don't know which one she would have purview on, but she would raise her hand. It was my assumption.
Okay, then I, I would request some guidance from the assistant director regarding this amendment with the impacts that the city attorney had alluded to earlier, if, if, if we could.
Assistant Director Charlton, do you have any information to inject around this first amendment?
Happy to, Mayor and council. I think what I've heard is something that's perfectly acceptable. As I understand it, this would be included in the second reading of the ordinance. And it would just define which section of the code is being referenced in which the city manager could sign an agreement. It is very specifically limited, as Alderman Budmets indicated, to only parking requirements and only in multi-tenant shopping centers. There is no other part of the zoning code that even talks to this ability to be granted administratively with the city manager's authority. So that's very consistent with the discussion the Planning and Zoning Commission had and their desire to help businesses fill some of the remaining vacancies in shopping centers, which is kind of the whole reason we brought this forward. So I think, I think the, the solution that's being suggested tonight is a very good one.
Okay, thank you. And if there isn't any further discussion on this first amendment, then I will have the clerk call roll.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Veneziano.
Yes.
Bessetti.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanica.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmets.
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, this first amendment does pass and get approved on for second reading here. Now Alderman Budmets, if you want to go ahead and define the second amendment, which defines the timeframe in which feedback has to be brought to the council by the manager, please do that now.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, if we could just add to this that upon execution of an agreement of, of this type, that the, the manager would notify the council in writing of the, of the agreement so that we are aware of it, that of its existence and just to give it to us so that we're, we're aware of what, what's been agreed to.
Okay. And so are you not looking for a specific timeframe or are you looking for Assistant Director Charlton to weigh in on the timeframe and what the potential impact or detriment is with that? Or are you just?
If she would be so willing to do so, then that way I could, I could make a better informed second amendment.
Okay. This is a little backwards then, but so before we. This is a little backwards then. But so before we go ahead and put the second out there, Assistant Director Charlton, is there an issue that creates detriment for a timeframe, twenty-one days, fifteen days, thirty days? What's your recommendation?
I think, as he stated it, which was upon execution of the agreement, that we would provide or ask the manager to provide counsel with notification. That's perfectly easy to do.
Okay.
No problem.
All right, so Alderman Budmets, then your second amendment here is to notify in writing the council the manager upon execution. Is that accurate?
That would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So with that, I'm looking for a second for Alderman Budmets. Thank you, Alderman Veneziano, for the second. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Veneziano?
Yes.
Besessi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanica?
Yes.
Mikhail?
Yes.
Budmets?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, that amendment is approved for addition into this ordinance. This now brings it back to the original ordinance with amendment. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for a second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sessi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanica?
Yes.
Mikhail?
Yes.
Budmets?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, this ordinance with amendment is now moved forward to second reading. So that brings us now to line item F, which is resolution number twenty-one dash R dash ten, and that's to authorize the execution of a property use agreement with Rolling Meadows Community Church. This was tabled on February twenty-ninth, city council meeting. Staff, it looks like, is requesting that this item again be postponed since the community church will be discussing this matter at their council meeting tonight, March ninth, and then they will update staff prior to our next meeting. So at this time, I'm looking for a motion to postpone this resolution to our next city council meeting, which is March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, for consideration. Is there a motion? I see Alderman Budmets and Alderman Mikhail with the second. Is there any discussion on postponing this until March twenty-third? And seeing none, the question is, shall the resolution be postponed until March twenty-third? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanica?
Yes.
Mikhail?
Yes.
Budmets?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Besessi?
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, this resolution is postponed until March twenty-third. Scrolling up on monitor two, it seems the next set of items, or the next item at least on the agenda, is the consent ordinances in for first reading. This consists of three items, items G through I. Does any Alderman by show of hand wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for ordinances?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Are we going to do the warrants?
Did I pass that? I'm sorry. Hold on. We're that that comes next. That's after.
Oh, I missed it. Okay, sorry.
That's okay. You're making me question myself. Thank you. So back back to asking if there's any that are desired to be pulled of these three, G, H, or I, and it doesn't appear that way, seeing none, then Alderman Budmets?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Isn't there some question as to the amount of the amount in I that we would be charging? I I think that the way that's written, it said one or two thousand when I read it. So and I don't think it was specific. So I didn't know if that was an item that needed to become up for discussion unless I misread it.
You know, I'm happy to pull it. If you want to be able to have the chance to open the floor on it, we can just pull it. It's not a problem. You know, I can circle back. So if you'd like to pull it, okay. Sounds good. So then we will now have G and H to deal with, so that's two. So the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the two ordinances in a single motion without debate. Is there such a motion? Thank you, Alderman Sanica for the first, and Alderman O'Brien for the second on that. That begins now with line item G. It's ordinance number two one dash zero zero at this time to approve an ordinance confirming and extending the state of emergency within the city of Rolling Meadows due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. And line item H, ordinance number twenty-one dash zero zero at this time to authorize reserving the city's twenty-twenty-one home rule private activity bond volume cap. The question is, shall the two ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sanica?
Yes.
Mikhail?
Yes.
Budmets?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Besessi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, the ordinances will be moved forward for second reading. This brings us back to line item I, ordinance number twenty-one dash zero zero at this time to amend division thirty-two entitled Video Gaming of Article Three entitled Other Businesses, Chapter Twenty-two entitled Businesses, and Appendix B of the City Code in order to clarify the license and license fees required for video gaming. Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward for second reading? Alderman Budmets, I appreciate the first on that, and Alderman Veneziano for the second for discussion. Alderman Budmets, you have the first go at this. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess the only thing I have is a question. In there, it says that we'd be moving this from one thousand to two thousand dollars. It was my understanding that presently there's no there's no cost for the for the gaming terminal operators. So are we are we charging them a thousand or two thousand, or were we in the past charging them a thousand and now we're charging them two thousand? I can just get some clarification.
Attorney Wolf, I see your hand is up. You can have added. Otherwise, Manager Crumstock?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So currently, the the terminal operators do pay that thousand-dollar fee. So what this does is establish the same fee with the clarification that this is the terminal operator business license fee. In addition, it increases that fee from one thousand to two thousand effective effective for the twenty-twenty-two license moving forward. So that everyone, every terminal operator that has already paid this one thousand-dollar fee for the twenty-twenty-one year, everyone's on an equal playing field, and it would be the same price as what's previously been established, only increasing for the twenty-twenty-two license.
Thank you very much for the clarification.
Thank you, Attorney Wolf. Manager Crumstock, do you feel like adding any additional background context as to what happened historically in the past with the city as a result of of these fees or or not? I saw your hand was up.
No, I think that City Attorney Melissa Wolf did a good understanding, but that's why, as we discussed at the COW, the two thousand comes in for the twenty-twenty-two amount, but for those except for the two that haven't paid, they're all fine.
Okay, thank you for that. Alderman O'Brien, I see your hand is up.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and thank you to staff, too, for providing the the grid of the comparisons. I just, I mean, I know we've talked about this before, is raising fees at a time like this. I know it's not applicable to twenty-twenty-two, but I believe in outside of Hoffman Estates charging a thousand dollars and Algonquin charging a thousand dollars, none of the other surrounding communities are charging anything for this unless I'm misinterpreting page seventeen, our packet, the first term, the first column, that's terminal operator for business license fee. So just something for us to be aware of, because I know we discussed this in the past, is that we would now be double two of the current other surrounding communities where the one, two, three, four, five, six of the others don't even have a fee, it looks like, based on our information provided.
Uh, thank you for that. Anything further, or should I?
No, sir.
Okay.
That was just one clerical. Thanks.
Alderman Sanica?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. In this regard, I would rather have Rolling Meadows be a leader and not a follower. I think that this is commiserate with what we have done in the past, and it makes sense going forward. So I'm in support of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sanica. If there isn't any further discussion on this matter, and I'll wait to see if a hand or two pop up. And if not, then I will ask for the clerk to call roll, being the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Clerk, please call.
Mikhail?
Yes.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Mikhail?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Besessi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanica?
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, the ordinance will be moved forward for second reading. This now brings us Alderman Besessi down to new business, which is a motion to approve payment of bills on warrant for March ninth, twenty-twenty-one. Would you do me the honor of making the motion to approve the warrant?
Sure, I make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Alderman O'Brien, I'll take your second on that. Is there any discussion on the bills on warrant? Alderman Veneziano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we had myself and Alderman Mikhail actually noticed the same the same charge on the bill on warrant for two charges to CATCO for water main breaks that were just kind of stuck out in a total of close to thirteen thousand. So just wanted to give an update. I did reach out to Director Horn because I was kind of curious why we would be outsourcing water main breaks when our public public works normally does that work. And he informed me that one of the breaks was deeper than we allow our crews to dig, and then the other one happened to be right when we got a snowstorm, so they had to outsource it so that they could maintain our our streets safe safely. So just wanted to kind of give an update on that, and then this way if any residents were wondering why we're outsourcing water main breaks. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Appreciate the attention to detail on that for both of both of you. Is there any further discussion on the matter? Now, I'm going to lower your hand, Alderman Veneziano. And seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call roll?
Budmets?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Besessi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanica?
Yes.
Mikhail?
Yes.
That makes seven in favor and none opposed. Therefore, the warrant is approved. Let me go ahead and toggle between monitors here for us, which will now bring us to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent resolutions. This consists of six items, and those are items K through P. Does any Alderman wish to remove any of the items from the consent agenda for resolutions? Alderman Veneziano?
Uh, item N, as in Nancy.
Got it. And then, go ahead.
Sorry, and item L. I went out of order. I apologize. That's it.
Okay, so I have for Veneziano, L, and N, and I see Alderman Mikhail.
Those were the same ones.
Okay.
For me, thank you.
Very well. So it looks like we're dropping from six to four items in in this matter. And as a result, then the chair declares it in order for one motion to consider these four resolutions in a single motion without debate. Is there such a motion? Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, and thank you, Alderman Sanica, for the second on that. So beginning with line item K, which is resolution number twenty-one dash R dash one-seven, it's to accept the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, also known as ASME, Council Thirty-One AFL dash CIO contract. And then moving on to line item M, which is resolution number twenty-one dash R dash nineteen, to authorize the submittal of an application for MWRD Stormwater Partnership Program funding for the Northwest Industrial Area Drainage Improvement Preliminary Engineering. Then the following line, item O, resolution number twenty-one dash R dash twenty-one, is to award a construction contract related to replacement of existing water main on Arbor Drive Phase Three, which is the final phase. And then last line, item P, resolution number twenty-one dash R dash twenty-two, is to award professional engineering contract for construction observation and related engineering services for the proposed water main replacement at Arbor Drive in Phase Three. The question is, shall the four resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Besessi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanica?
Yes.
Mikhail?
Yes.
Budmets?
Yes.
With seven in favor and unopposed, those resolutions are adopted. This now brings us back to line item L, which is resolution number twenty-one dash R dash eighteen, is to authorize a contract for the purchase of a twenty-twenty-one fire or freightliner dump truck with snow removal equipment in replacement of RM zero-three-four slash T three-four-one. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Thank you, Alderman Veneziano, and thank you for the second, Alderman O'Brien. As for discussion, Alderman Veneziano, you pulled it. I will allow you the first step here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So from my understanding, I believe the Committee for Our Equipment met before tonight's meeting, and and so I'm hoping to get some insight from their meeting, actually, for both of these items that I pulled, and and just see what they what their recommendation is for both of these, these two items for the vehicle replacement.
Very well, thank you. Alderman Budmets, as the liaison from the council to that committee, would you like to share an update, or would you rather I defer to staff than this request?
No, I'm happy to share an update. Yes, the Vehicle Replacement Committee met this evening prior to the council meeting. This was one of the items that we discussed. The the truck in question was originally slated to be replaced last year in twenty-twenty, and it was deferred to this year due to trying to save money because of COVID. And the topic came up about the importance of replacing this truck in this year. There are three other trucks that are are in the budget to be replaced for public works this year. And it's my understanding that of the four trucks that are slated to be replaced, this would be the most important one to get to get replaced and of the greatest, it is the greatest wear. And additionally, even if we agree to replace this, pay to replace this vehicle tonight, if we ordered it, it wouldn't be ready until November or December. So the the it's a long lead time item. If we delay this by even a few months, it will probably enter into next year's budget. So the thought was is that the committee wants to recommend this with the understanding that if if that if, if times are tough and we have to, if we have to cut other expenses, that there are three other trucks that we could in fact look at not approving or, or cutting later, from later in the budget year.
Thank you for the update, Alderman Beniziano. Does that satisfy your inquiry?
Absolutely. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Alderman Sanoyka?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Budmats, would it be then your recommendation that the council passes or approves this consent resolution, or sorry, this resolution tonight?
It depends on the described condition of the vehicle, and that the fact is that we've already spent money trying to Band-Aid it together a few years ago just to keep it running. I can see that this would probably be money well spent to, to make sure that we have the use of the truck. It seems to be one of the most used vehicles in the fleet.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. And again, as you mentioned, that there are a couple of others that they're willing to forego for the critical nature of this specific truck. So with that, is there any other items to discuss on this before we have the clerk call roll? Okay, so the question is, shall the resolution be adopted? Will the clerk please call roll?
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessesi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the resolution is adopted. This now brings us back to line item N, resolution number twenty-one dash R dash twenty, to authorize a contract for the purchase of two police patrol vehicles. I'm looking for a motion for this resolution to be adopted. Alderman Diastis, thank you for the first. Alderman Beniziano, thank you for the second. At this time, Alderman Beniziano, as you pulled this, you can have first step here for discussion. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm going to basically repeat myself. Again, if we could just hear from Alderman Budmats on, on what the committee's recommendations were for the purchase of these two vehicles and what the plans are for our police vehicles, since I don't think we've really had an update since last summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Beniziano. Alderman Budmats, if you could please provide a status update and a recommendation based on direction that the committee feel the council should go.
So I explained to the committee that I had been hearing some pushback from Alderman about the expenditures given some of the shortfalls in the budget. And we agreed that, and the information that I have is also from last summer. So the last that I know, the vehicles in question had eighty-eight thousand miles on it roughly. And so, and we didn't have the current mileage. It was assumed to be over a hundred thousand miles, but we weren't, we weren't in fact given an exact number. So we as a council, as a committee, said that we would be willing to push this back on a meeting and come back with more information to the council so they can make a better informed decision about the purchase of this vehicle. These vehicles are not as long of lead time items, and it could, it could be pushed back for a little while and still be able to get accomplished this year if that's what the council voted to do. So it may be that you would want to entertain a motion to table it for some length of time so that we can come back to you with more information.
Okay, thank you for that. Alderman Beniziano, will you still have the floor and this question is under your purview? Are you satisfied with what you heard and is there anything you wish to do as a result?
I will, I will make a, a motion, but my, my question would be, do you have a date for a next meeting for the Vehicle Replacement Committee so I can make a, a date for a recommendation for a motion?
Presently, the next committee meeting is set for June the eighth. And I don't, I do not know if we can still get the vehicles accomplished in a timely fashion for use this year if we wait all the way until the June eighth meeting. So if you, at your request, whatever you want to delay it to, the decision to, but I think if we delay it that long, it, we may, we may get the information sooner and be able to vote on it sooner.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you think, is there, is there staff that can provide greater accuracy on a, on a date that Alderman Beniziano can utilize for this?
Thank, thank you, Mayor. For some reason, I cannot locate my raise hand feature. So I just got off the phone about an hour ago with Supervisor Dwayne Shad. He is the supervisor of internal services, which includes vehicle services. He believes that the cutoff for the twenty twenty-one models is the second week in April. We talked about bringing this item back at the next meeting. I think it's important that we do bring it back at the next meeting because if we end up having to go with a twenty twenty-two model, there could be several thousand dollars that we have to spend, more than we have to spend this year for the twenty twenty-two model year. And any potential changes in the body style would require us to buy new interior, for lack of a better word, police equipment such as cages and equipment that goes into the vehicle after the vehicle's purchased. So I think it would be important to bring this item back to the next meeting. We do have the information Alderman Budmats was referring to. We expect to send that out to him tomorrow morning to make sure it's the information he had, was looking for, and then we will provide that to city council under the next committee, council meeting.
Okay, so from that, you gather that March twenty-third would be a sufficient time in which you could provide to the council information with enough lead time for the council to consume and digest, correct?
And my expectation was to send it as part of the original, as part of the packet. The information that Alderman Budmats was looking for was simply how the numbers changed as, as it relates to vehicle mileage and hours. So again, it's a very minor piece of information missing from the memo. So if there's other information that the council would like to see, I would need to understand what that information is before establishing a date.
Sure. Thank you. Alderman Beniziano, is March twenty-third feasible for you with your motion to postpone this resolution?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So my motion will be to postpone this until our next meeting of March twenty-third and hope that staff will be able to provide us with some more information.
All right, thank you. And I did see a couple of hands up. If you can just lower them and then raise them for support in the second to the motion. Alderman Bessesi, thank you for the second, I think it was the second. Is there any discussion on postponing this until March twenty-third city council meeting? Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and my apologies if I'm missing something here or need another cup of coffee based on the question that was asked. So the, the point of clarification we're looking for is how miles translate into hours of use? And is that allowing enough time for it to go back to the Vehicle Replacement Committee prior to coming to us? Because that's where it sounds like, if I was understanding Alderman Budmats, the committee was looking for more information at the Vehicle Replacement Committee. So I'm concerned if it needs to go to them, just even if it's an email review, since they're not meeting till June before getting to us, like, like I guess that's what I'm looking for, who the additional reviewer was requested by. I'm comfortable as it's written now, but if Alderman Budmats is saying that the Vehicle Replacement Committee as a whole wanted more information, that's my concern. So I was just looking to clarify what additional information is going to who and by what? Because I was understanding the Vehicle Replacement Committee wanted the additional information.
Alderman Budmats, within the Vehicle Replacement Committee, wanted that information? Alderman Budmats, if you want to inject if there were any other members of that committee that wanted it? I understand it's a very small ad hoc committee, but are there any others within the committee that wanted this information or solely you on the council here?
I was, I was more trying to bring the committee the, the feedback that I'd heard from other Aldermen as in, as to as much information as possible to verify the, the need. So I came to the committee and said, can I, can I for sure get these numbers, which, which proves the need and, and as much it wasn't available at tonight's meeting? If we had that information for the next, it didn't seem like the rest of the committee was as concerned as some of the feedback I'd received from other Aldermen. And, and so, and I, I completely understand their concern based on, you know, some of the budget reports that I've read. It's, it's good to be cautious and it's good to have all the information so that we can make a well-informed decision.
Thank you for that. And so connecting the dots in the sense that Alderman Beniziano of the fourth ward pulled this to discuss the, the question of spending on these two patrol cars and the necessity at this time. And it was also a request of Alderman Mikhail's, however Alderman Beniziano had pulled it first, and then Alderman Budmats of the second ward, who had the same concerns who resident of the second ward, getting this information from residents there and their concerns, brought it back to the Vehicle Replacement Committee to get this information so that way the council as a whole, Ward Two, Four, and One, can go ahead and convey to their residents that we are exercising discretion with our spending as it relates to new equipment based on the year we've had and maybe what we're up against in the future potentially. Does that help, Alderman O'Brien?
It does, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for that. And I guess my only request at that point, would we request a waiving then of first reading once it gets back to us if we have an April deadline to make sure we get the prices quoted for twenty twenty-one, should this move forward? Would that be a possibility too? Or it's probably just made at that time, then is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I think we'll leave it for staff to make that request, recommendation if they need it. Otherwise, we can do what you did earlier this evening in the earlier part of the agenda.
Thank you.
Yep.
If I could provide some clarification, Mayor, because of the fact that this is a resolution, it doesn't have to go through two readings like other ordinances. So at the meeting on the twenty-third, this resolution would just need to go through the one vote and, and would be approved at that next meeting if the council votes in favor of it.
Okay, thank you for the clarification on that. Alderman Bessesi?
Yes, just, just, this is more of a minor point. I was looking at the quotes for the vehicles and I was just curious why one of them is thirty-five hundred dollars more than the other when they look to be the same vehicle? Is it just that we're, we're buying specific vehicles and taking them as is?
So Director Horn found the hand feature. Congrats. Floor is yours if you have feedback for Alderman Bessesi.
Yeah, if, if it's okay, Mayor, we had another resident ask about that issue. I'll just provide that information in the memorandum, but ultimately, there are two different vehicles. One is purchased as a hybrid vehicle, the other is not. Chief Nowacki can comment further if you're interested, but we are looking at how the hybrid patrol vehicles, which are the standard vehicle that's being offered through Northwest Municipal Conference, will work within our fleet as patrol vehicles. So the Vehicle Replacement Committee made a conscious decision, I believe, two years ago to start implementing hybrid patrol vehicles on a trial, if you will, trial basis to see what kind of issues might arise from those. So that's why one is hybrid and one is not. I think we did that last year where we purchased one hybrid vehicle and two were not. Okay, that, that, that's a great answer. You know, I'd be, I'm, I'm real happy that we're looking at more green alternatives. So, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, both. I'm going to lower your hand as I allow Alderman Sanoyka to take the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. For Director Horn, in addition to all the information that's been requested at the Vehicle Replacement Committee and tonight, I would also request that council receive a cost comparison to the difference of whether or not we defer this to twenty twenty-two and the cost that would be incurred through buying additional equipment, as you had mentioned, versus hitting, hitting this April deadline for twenty twenty-one. And, and I want to ask to, to Director Horn if, if there are any questions regarding that request specifically.
Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka. No, no additional concerns on my end. We, we did talk about that in the Vehicle Replacement Committee meeting, the potential, you know, at the time, the experts in the room were, were referring to four to eight percent increase just on the cost of the vehicle, not including equipment. So, and as we've learned over the last several years, the manufacturers seem to change minor things every year, which causes you to have to buy all new things. It makes it impossible to reuse the old equipment in the new vehicle. So that's just a reality of what we're dealing with as a result of what the, the manufacturers are doing with their vehicles. So we'll take a look at that. It'll be hard for us to make that determination as far as the equipment costs that would be incurred in twenty twenty-two, but we can certainly determine what the actual vehicle cost would be.
Thank you.
One other, one other comment, I'm sorry, Mayor, just, it was coming to my mind, one comment Alderman Sanoyka made, I want to make sure the entire city council recalls that we deferred vehicles last year to this year and this year to next year and next year to the year after and the year after to the year after for the entire six-year program. Just to be aware, every time we push vehicles out, it creates a stockpile of future replacements. So again, in an effort to stay balanced with our expenditures, we do try to maintain some sort of consistency with how we do the replacements because we don't want to be in a position where one year we have to replace eight vehicles because they all cannot be deferred. So just want that on everyone's mind when we talk about deferring vehicles.
Thank you for, for addressing that component, Director Horn, that, that's appreciated. Is there further discussion on this motion on the floor, which is to postpone this resolution to March twenty, twenty-third? Okay, so seeing no further discussion, the question is, shall the resolution be postponed to March twenty-third? With that, will the clerk please call roll?
Bessesi.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this resolution is postponed until the March twenty-third city council meeting. Yep, the twenty-third, I keep, without the calendar in front of me, I get concerned that I'm going to say the wrong date, but that is correct. So this now brings us to other business and reports. With that, there's the mayor's appointment, appointments. I hope you all had the opportunity to review some information regarding Resident Paul Chuberka of the second ward and his request to participate in volunteers' time on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And as a result, tonight, I'm looking for a motion to approve Paul's appointment. Thank you, Alderman Sanoyka, and thank you, Alderman Mikhail, for the second. Is there any discussion on Mr. Chuberka's appointment? Alderman Sanoyka?
Mayor, I really appreciate reading his letter of interest. Paul seems to be a, a very competent addition to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I look forward to working with him in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that and expressing your sentiment. I felt the same speaking with him, and so I hope everyone else does with that. If there isn't any further discussion, then I'll ask for the clerk to call roll.
Diastis.
Yes.
Sanoyka.
Yes.
Mikhail.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Bessesi.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, Mr. Paul Chuberka is now part of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you for that. We also have to move on. There aren't any mayor's proclamations this evening. How about the city clerk's report?
No, there's no reports tonight.
Okay, thank you very much, Judy. Then that brings us to city staff reports. Just a reminder, there are no dis- Just a reminder, there are no discussions on the staff reports, but the first item here are the community items of interest, and for this, we'll defer to Manager Crumstock. When you're ready, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council before you our items of interest. And before we start, we do have some additional ones that we will add on. And then obviously, Public Works Director Rob Horn did find out reactions is where the, lower your hand up and down with the new Zoom, which is not as friendly as the old Zoom. But we do want to mention that during January and February city council meetings, we did mention that due to COVID-19 continuing in the area, the St. Patrick's Day dinner is now obviously canceled. It was scheduled for this Saturday, March 13th. We are not canceling St. Patrick's Day or my birthday, but that's still on the 17th. But at least the dinner is being canceled. So March 14th is daylight savings time. It does begin, remember to spring forward one hour and it is also smart idea to change the batteries in your smoke and alarm and carbon monoxide detectors if you still have a battery that needs to be checked. We also want to make sure that everybody's testing those devices, especially in recent times with additional fires in the area, that everybody checks to make sure that they're operating. Just a friendly reminder that yard waste collection starts on Monday, March 29th. In addition, please remember that this also marks the end of early refuse set out, which is allowed by ordinance for November 1st to March 31st. Beginning Monday, March 29th, residents should place refuse and recyclables at the curb after 6:00 PM the night before scheduled pickup. For more information, please contact Public Works at 847-963-0500 or visit www.citerrm.org-publicworks. We do want to mention, and I hope everybody has seen, congratulations to Katrina Kirsnak of Hoover Street. She created the Sea Turtle, which is very large sea turtle, as you can see from the picture, and the Hayes family, Kayden and Leah, and Finch Court for creating a snowman palace, and they were the winning entries for the city's snow much fun sculpting context. The city appreciates all the efforts and creations that were submitted for this event. We do want to mention, again, first installment of the Cook County property tax bills are out and property owners have until May 3rd to pay without any late charges. The first installments were actually due on March 2nd, but thanks to an ordinance that was passed back in November by Cook County Board of Commissioners, the property owners can pay without any interest charge through May 3rd. Public Works has started a Facebook page and a Twitter account. This is a page for the Public Works Department to provide useful information to residents, businesses, and friends of the department, just to stay engaged. But please like Public Works on Facebook and follow them on Twitter. Community Development is starting a pre-submittal consultation program where residents can meet the staff for up to a half an hour to discuss their summer projects, swimming pools, fences, anything that they can think of. And this will help residents prepare for all the right materials for their project as is submitted to Community Development. This is an annual project that will continue and it runs from December 1st to April 1st of every period that we have. Coming with important dates for the April 6 election, March 10th, early voting begins, March 21st, deadline to register vote, April 1st is the final date to request a mail ballot, April 5th, early voting ends, and obviously, the election is April 6th. We do want to mention again, please shop, dine, and order in Rolling Meadows is important more than ever. During these times, it's significant to remember big boxes, restaurants, and small businesses in the city of Rolling Meadows. Due to, obviously, it's election season, we do have the friendly reminder to all candidates and supporters placing signs in the parkway. Rolling Meadows new zoning code regulates political signs the same as any other temporary yard sign as follows. One temporary yard signs are allowed in all zoning districts. No signs are allowed in right of ways, including the grass areas between the curb and the sidewalk. In residential zoning districts, yard signs shall not exceed eight square feet in area per sign and six feet in height. In non-residential zoning districts, yard signs shall not exceed 20 square feet in area per sign and eight feet in height. Two yard signs are allowed per street frontage. Yard signs shall not be closer than five feet to the property line. Yard signs displayed are limited to a communitative group, a total of 120 calendar days per year per property. Moving election signs immediately after the election preserves days for other sales events or other notices for that location. And then yard signs shall not block the clear vision triangle at intersections 25 degrees or driveway entrances to roads 10 degrees as follows, and there's things. We do want to mention again, and we put this in the Friday letter, that St. Patrick's Day, the police department and the state police are participating. And again, it just drives sober, drive safe during these times, it's really important. The St. Patrick's Day Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over campaign is funded by federal traffic safety funds from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, and it does go during that whole period of time. We do want to mention again, even though that there are vaccines being given out, please mask up, not just for you, it's for everybody around. And then we do want to mention, it's in very basic infancy, but it's going to move hopefully very quickly through Northwest Central. There's going to be potentially the hyper-local strategy of a pop-up area for vaccines. It could be next week as quick, depending on how Cook County and Jewel Osco. We do want to reiterate to people that if you're looking for a vaccine, please contact the websites that are out there. I do know that at least one alderman does have some additional items on that, just as a FYI to the residents. But again, please maintain and look at our website when it does, if it does, this pop-up will happen very quickly as it's been moving very quickly through Northwest Central. With that, those are the items of interest with the additions that I just added.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock, for sharing those community items of interest. At this time, we'll move on to the next line item, which is discussing the fiscal year 2020 December financials. And for that, we will defer to Finance Director Gallagher. Finance Director Gallagher, when you are ready, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. In the council packet tonight is the FY 2020 financial report for results of operations as of December 31st, 2020. As a reminder, the city's auditors are here at City Hall for two weeks in March, completing their audit fieldwork. The city's 2020 audit will be presented at the June 15th Committee of the Whole Meeting. Between that time and now, we are preparing items for the audit and looking forward to present that in June. This financial report does cover operations as of December 31st, 2020. It is not intended to be a financial estimate. However, this report does provide a review of the city's revenues and expenditures. The focus is on the general fund because it is the largest operating fund for the city. Each fund is budgeted through the budget process and are separate from each other. And I think that's really important to remember about how all our funds are structured. While the city does budget looking at all funds on the whole, at the end of the day, each fund is a separate self-balancing account. As discussed previously, capital projects remain intact and some have been delayed due to COVID-19 and the uncertainty surrounding that. For December 2020, general fund revenues are coming in at 34.1 million or 96% of the 2020 budget. It should be noted that following past years, the city received approximately 100% of the city's property tax levy. And property taxes make up about 34% of the entire general fund's revenues, about a third, and it's a very reliable source of revenue for the city. In fact, when you look at the report, you'll see that the real estate transfers for the year are about up 30%, and so real estate really is moving. And it shows increases for 2020, and we hope that trend continues. The general fund's major revenues, such as sales tax, income tax, local use tax, for January 2021 and through March of 2021, are recorded to the 2020 fiscal year. So that means that there are three months in 2021 that we record back to 2020, and that's part of the audit process that we follow. It's important to note that the charts within the report really demonstrate the diversity and strength of the city's major revenues, particularly sales tax, local use tax, and income tax. Income tax is one of those that is a very good indicator of how the economy is doing on a whole. Obviously, we have high unemployment in the area, but at the same point, when you look at that, those items have changed over time. In addition to that, the income tax is an indicator that we are level with year-over-year revenues for income tax. Turning to general fund expenditures, expenditures are coming in at 34.5 million or 98% of the 2020 budget. When reviewing the line item detail for expenditures on page 16 of the financials, there are some salary line items which show a percentage point or more above the budget. And there are two primary drivers to these overages, which are COVID-19 response. In 2020, the city maintained and increased services. Additional ERP work is the second driver to that, and of course, overtime in some areas. I was fortunate enough to talk with Alderman Sanoyka this week. She gave me a call and we talked and reviewed some of the financials together, and I appreciate the call. We went over that too, and it was important for me to mention some of the drivers there too. As a reminder, the city has requested and received funds due to COVID-19, and that really is for that salary expenditure reimbursement because of the, the city has not only maintained services but increased areas in response to COVID-19. And the city has received more than $325,000 of federal funding in response to COVID-19. This report details a lot of important data, and one of, one area to review is on page six of the report. The chart on page six shows that the general fund estimate for 2020. This is the estimate that was published in the FY 2021 adopted budget. The estimate for 2020 shows a planned deficit of $399,123, which means the city planned for expenditures being more than revenues, expected revenues. The December financials show a very similar story in that the deficit position is estimated at this point in time, about a $420,000 deficit position, about a difference of $21,000 between what was published in the 2021 budget and what we're showing here. Again, the important takeaway from this is that the snapshot of the fund balance on page six shows that the fund balance for the general fund is well within parameters. In fact, it is at 30% of fund balance or about $10 million of reserves on hand for the city. Remember, our fund balance parameters for the general fund is 15% to 30% fund balance parameters, and we are at 30%. That is the revenue and expenditure look for the general fund. I did want to make a few additional notes for other funds, and there's a lot of detail in the financial report, and of course, a lot of the detail will be in the city's financial audit as well. But on page nine of the financial report, it's important to note that this was in the 2021 adopted budget, and this will show you by fund all of the estimated fund balance for 2020. And it's important to note that right now, the funds are in line with that estimate, and all of that will be presented as audited financials in June of this year. Turning to the motor fuel tax fund, a question came up as to, well, it looks like we've received quite a bit of revenue for the year, and that is true. There are three parts now to the state motor fuel tax fund. We have the regular MFT fund revenues coming in from the state of Illinois. We have the additional MFT, which was the increase that the state did a few years ago, that we didn't have that information on hand when we drafted the 2020 budget. And then we also have the rebuild Illinois bonds. The city is going to be receiving $1.5 million for road construction and other related items approved by IDOT, $1.5 million over the next three years. Just wanted to highlight in the motor fuel tax fund. A couple of quick notes on utilities fund. The utilities fund is on track, a little bit lower than revenue. Of course, we knew that with COVID-19 due to some of the larger water users out there, not occupied fully right now, but 8% revenues down, but we're also lower on expenditures for the refuse fund. We're right on track for the refuse fund. For cash on hand, there's a cash investment summary report. The city has overall right now $26 million as of December 31st, 2020. And primarily, a lot of that is in the general fund, which shows about 33% of the total cash or $8 million. I wanted to close out real quickly with a couple of closing items, and of course, we're going to be discussing a lot of these kinds of things within the city's audits that'll be presented in June. But being that this is the December financial report, we have certainly, over the last year, seen a lot of uncertainty. It's been a challenge. I think what's really important to note is that we have, as a city, really been resilient. Of course, there's uncertainty with different unfunded mandates from the state of Illinois. There's definitely a threat to our revenues from the state of Illinois if folks have read the certain local distributed fund threats of 10% losses to the city such as income tax. Those are the types of uncertainties that we face. But by looking at some of those uncertainties, we've planned for the future, for the short term and the long term. We've been funding our pensions, we've been completing the capital, and we've been providing high-quality services for our residents and businesses during this unprecedented time. So I wanted to just close with those kinds of things and leave it there, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Finance Director Gallagher, for providing the updates and reports. Definitely looking forward to having finalized information after the audit's complete and revisiting this in June, July timeframe. The next item, line item three, it's the Traffic Review Committee. As I understand it, there is no report this evening for this because there was no meeting in February. So this will bring us down to the fourth item on the list, which is the March 16th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Draft Agenda. And for this, I'll defer back to Manager Crumstock. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Obviously, the March 16th, we will be obviously having a Committee of the Whole Meeting. The four items that are being prepared at this point in time are procedures for filling vacant committees and commission positions, Alderman Diastis, brush collection, survey results and discussions, the emergency management coach like December 2020 fire summary steps, ongoing items, and then obviously, LEAF program topic requested by Alderman Diastis at the November 10th, 2020 city council meeting.
Thank you for sharing the draft Committee of the Whole Agenda. That brings us to then the March 23rd, 2021 city council draft agenda.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Before you is the draft of our last meeting of March, March 23rd. We do have obviously the second readings that were from tonight, with one removed that had a waiver for that too. Then we will get to the consent ordinances at that point in time, where we extend the state of the emergency for the city of Rolling Meadows. We will have the approved business license and development fee revisions. That was one of the items that we had at a Committee of the Whole Discussion. We will also have the first reading, which is not on this, but outdoor seating. We will be bringing that back to the city council. Obviously, with March being nice, we need to get that resolved, and it will be pretty much the same thing that we did in the past, and obviously, businesses continue with outdoor seating to help them out. We'll pay some bills on the warrant, the adopted 2021 zoning map. We will have the approved Phase II CDVG Arbor Drive subrecipient agreement. We will have the contract for curb and sidewalk program. We approve the green infrastructure, Green Opportunity GIGO grant. We will also have the item for the police vehicle moved on to this one at that point in time. We will hopefully have some appointments to the environmental committee, though that they are full committee. We have community items of interest, the fiscal year 2021 January financials. The February 2021 new business list will be presented, and then new, and going forward, always the last meeting of the month will have the first meeting draft of that next agenda. So what we have drafted at this point in time for the April 13th, 2021 city council draft agenda will be on that. And again, just like what we do in the first meeting, that we try showing you the draft items that are being worked on or being discussed by staff, this last meeting will have what's being discussed for that April 13th. being discussed for that April thirteenth. And obviously, matters not on the agenda, closed session, and adjournment. Those are the draft items for the March twenty-third City Council meeting.
Thank you for sharing all that information for the twenty-third City Council meeting. This now brings us to matters not on the agenda, and before we get into addressing any matters not on the agenda, I do have a matter that's not on the agenda, and at this time, I'm going to ask that a member of the council provide a motion in a second to amend the draft March sixteenth Committee of the Whole Agenda to remove an item. An item is procedures for filling vacant committees and commissions positions. After the first and second motion during discussion, I'll explain to the council the position for the decision and reasoning behind that. So is there by show of hand a motion to, thank you, Alderman Budmats, and thank you, Alderman McHale, to remove the item procedures for filling vacant committees and commissions positions? Quick background for the council. I did receive a copy of the background with discussion points on this subject, and it contains numerous components that directly restrict the mayor's authority within our municipal code and state statute. As a result of majority of the discussion points in the background leaning that way, I need time to identify and remove the items which are immutable and therefore not relevant to be addressed during the discussion. And in addition, there are other components including that ask the mayor to take additional or subsequent actions within the proposed process, but in an effort to not expose the city to potential or unnecessary liability issues, these actions, they also need to be reviewed thoroughly beforehand as well. And the reason being is because they do have the potential to expose the city in a negative fashion, and I want to make sure that this doesn't happen as we move this subject forward. Let me be clear that I am absolutely in favor of discussing procedures for filling vacant committees and commissions and making opportunities or making it easier or more efficient for residents to volunteer their time, but I am not in favor of trying to discuss something that restricts mayor's authorities or that could potentially damage the city as a response of a mayor's subsequent follow-up response request or action item. And so with that, I need time, and I'm pulling this, I would like to pull this off next week's Committee of the Whole to a future one after I've done my due diligence. So with that discussion, is there any other discussion on the subject? Alderman Diastis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since I put this together, I had reviewed it with our city attorney, and the city attorney told me she found nothing that was wrong with the comments that I had put together. So I don't know if the city attorney has checked, if it's something different to you, but she indicated to me when I reviewed it with her that it was fine.
Yeah, and so I did have a subsequent conversation with her on these, and I did express to her that I was a bit concerned that nobody had informed you, that a good deal of these were directly restricting the mayor's authority based on our current municipal code and state statute, and that it was unfortunate for you to be misled thinking that these are broachable subject points, and they're not. And then there was miscommunication where it was the attorney thought that maybe Manager Crumstock was addressing those with you, or that Manager Crumstock thought Attorney Wolf was addressing them with you. And so in any event, there are components in here that directly restrict the mayor's authority, and they're immutable, and so we're not going to address them, and so I have to go through and scratch.
I'd like to hear from City Attorney Wolf, please.
Attorney Wolf?
Yes, thank you. Basically, I did have a conversation with Alderman Budmats when he first proposed the, I'm sorry, Alderman Diastis, thank you, when he first proposed these procedures regarding filling vacancies for the committees and the commissions. And I did express some concerns regarding certain provisions that were restrictive on the mayor's authority to make appointments. Alderman Diastis indicated he would make those changes to the document. Whether those changes have been made, I am not aware of. Manager Crumstock was not supposed to relay any further information in this regard. I had the one communication with Alderman Diastis, and then, you know, as you know, Mayor, a subsequent communication with you. But my legal position is anything that infringes upon the mayor's authority to make these appointments, which he is authorized to do so by statute, is not legally recommended. If there are procedures that are put into place that create a mechanism to make those appointments easier, or, you know, there were certain things that required notice to those individuals that may apply for such appointments, those are decisions that can be made by the council if those procedures want to be put in place. But anything that's restrictive on the mayor's authority to make the appointments that he is authorized to do so by state statute and the city code is not legally recommended, and I stand by that position.
That's fine. Can you tell me what was restrictive?
Now is not the time to get into each point. You guys can follow up with that offline.
I didn't ask for each point. I just asked for what was restrictive because I sent Attorney Wolf exactly the changes he had requested.
I can't answer that.
This is not the time to get into specifics. It's not the time to get into these specifics.
But anything that is restrictive on the mayor's ability to make that appointment, I would not recommend legally. I can't identify those specific points at this juncture.
Maybe we can have a conversation, Attorney Wolf.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
When can we have a conversation? So you can share with me what was wrong.
You can have a, we can have a conversation anytime at your convenience after the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. So any further discussion on this? Alderman Budmats?
I move to call the motion, please.
With that said, the question is to remove the subject procedures for filling vacant committees and commission positions from the March sixteenth Committee of the Whole Draft Agenda. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sanoyka?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
O'Brien?
My apologies if I should ask to say four. Can we postpone it to have some date on it? I'm okay for adjusting it, but I'd like to put a date on it, like we've done the other items we've postponed tonight. An apology if this is out of order and should have been asked beforehand.
So my goal would be to get to it as soon as possible, but if you want a date, then I'm going to say the May Committee of the Whole, whatever the date in May is going to be.
If Alderman Budmats, or I'm sorry, Alderman Diastis and Attorney Wolf are speaking tonight or tomorrow after the meeting, I don't know why it would have to be the May, but I don't know.
The reason Alderman O'Brien, the reason it has to be in May is because I am the one that's going through this, and like I said before, and we started calling roll on this, I'm not going through this, but I am absolutely in favor of this discussion and bringing ease and efficiency to volunteers giving their time and a procedure that enables that. But I am not interested in discussing any of this process because it serves somebody's emotional or personal position on the matter from a legacy. That's not what I'm doing, so I'm taking my time to review this, and when it's reviewed, and we don't have to address immutable items that can't be changed based on state statute or municipal code, then we will revisit it. So for now, I'm just pulling it off of next week's agenda. So you can vote yes or no, Alderman O'Brien?
I would say no, since we don't have a confirmed date.
Okay, thank you.
That's my reason I'm not saying, yep.
Thank you.
Veniziano?
Yes.
Assesi?
Yes.
Diastis?
No.
With five in favor and two opposed, fifth item, procedures for filling vacant committees and commissions, will be removed from the draft Committee of the Whole Agenda and not available for discussion on March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. With that, we are still on matters not on the agenda. Are there other matters not on the agenda? Alderman Budmats?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last time under, I understand, the agenda, I did bring up the subject of changing the date for the publication of the packet for the agenda and for information, and my understanding is that it's still being reviewed, but I would like to see that come up on an upcoming, upcoming Council of the Whole, and I'm willing to wait till May if I have to, or April, whatever makes sense, based on how it fits in with everybody's schedule, but I really don't want to see it take the back burner for another year or two. So if we could, if we could get some movement off the center on this, that'd be great.
Okay. Do you have a specific recommendation beyond your position on the matter here?
Just that it's done in some kind of a timely fashion. So if we can't get it done in April, if we could move it to May, if that's enough time for staff to review it, that would be great, so that we can have a discussion and, you know, and at least make a decision as to what we're going to do.
Okay. Thank you for that. Anything further?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Veniziano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I couldn't raise my hand during Ward Report, so I apologize. My hand went missing again. So I do have one Ward Four report. I am holding a meet and greet for Ward Four residents on Monday, the fifteenth, March fifteenth, from three to eight, at our beloved Reps. For any of the residents that would like to come out and discuss community, you know, concerns or any type of questions you may have, and I'm going to guess that my next announcement might bring up some questions. So Alderman McHale and myself, along with the Park District and the library, have been doing some great teamwork here these last couple of days, and we found a great need in our community with our seniors and getting them registered for their COVID nineteen vaccine. As many of you may know, that registering for this vaccine has become a real challenge, even for us kind of tech-savvy people, and so for our seniors, it's a real challenge. So we've partnered with the Park District and the library, and we are starting a new event. It's going to be called the Vaccine Registration Tech Support Event. It's going to be ran by volunteers at the library. It will be by appointment only, where the seniors are going to call a hotline number to make their appointment, and they will come to the library, and we will have volunteers assist them in signing up with the various online platforms to get registered to get an appointment. This does not guarantee any appointment for a vaccine. It just gets them in line and registered, which is the biggest challenge our seniors are experiencing. So we are excited that this is going to be starting. We're going to actually roll this out next week, next Tuesday, the sixteenth. They're going to be shorter hours next week, the sixteenth and the eighteenth, from eleven to one thirty, and we will have that hotline number announced tomorrow when we know it's up and working properly. It had some glitches today, and we will get that out via through the Park District, the library, and through City Hall. And then we would also say that if there's any of our residents out there that are kind of tech-savvy and would love to volunteer with our seniors, we will gladly accept your help, and you can call that hotline as well, and we will gladly take your assistance along with any of our council members or any of the staff within our city. We will definitely take any help we can get. And then if you have any questions in the meantime, you can certainly email myself or Alderman McHale with any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Veniziano, and thank you, Alderman McHale. As I said before, I think that's phenomenal. Happy to offer my assistance with scheduling or volunteering if needed, not to be reductive to the efforts going on, you know, in the county level and things, but it was always ironic that this first group, one B, is a demographic that struggles with using online platforms or technological literacy struggles, so I appreciate what you're doing to try and take a different approach to help these folks get the services they need. Thank you very much. I see Alderman Budmats, your hand up. I don't know if it's legacy. Okay. Alderman Bessesi?
Yes. First off, I'd like to commend Alderman McHale and Alderman Veniziano for setting up that program. I think it's a much-needed, a much-needed thing, and I kind of wish I would have thought of it. The one thing I do have a question on, is it going to be limited to only one A and one B, or whatever phases we're in at the time of the event?
I think right now, we're going to be focusing on our senior group, and anybody who's having difficulty registering online is more than welcome to leave a message for us, and we're happy to get back to you and assist. There may be some people who still have challenges or don't have the proper equipment at home, so it won't be completely limited to those in those groups, no.
Okay, that's good. I just wanted to make it clear so people didn't think that they were prohibited from getting the assistance, so thank you.
Anything further, Alderman Bessesi?
No, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman O'Brien?
I can find my hand button, but I couldn't find my unmute. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just a real brief update regarding the Economic Development Committee. We did meet last week, and happy to share, as we tied, closed out last year, one of the main items for the committee this year is goals for two thousand twenty-one. So we had very, very basic discussion regarding, we'd like to see what I believe members from the previous Economic Development Committee had started a couple of years ago is an incentive program to get businesses back in. We just took a snapshot of the Kirtchoff stretch here, and I think Mike Repi, as our chair, counted thirteen storefront vacancies. So we're very early discussions about some type of incentive that in the past had done for restaurants. We're not looking to limit it to restaurants. It might be any small business-type thing, because clearly, the chains probably aren't in the same type of economic times as others. So we've asked council or staff, and we're going to work with staff over the coming months about some type of incentive program to fill some of the vacancies, working with landlords, because we know a lot of it goes back to landlords and what the cost of rent is as well. So we have determined that that's a big goal for the committee during two thousand twenty-one, so as updates continue, we'll certainly bring them back, but that's kind of how we laid out the plan for two thousand twenty-one, is to help with some vacancies and not lose more, given the COVID times.
Yeah, that's the operative word, not lose more. Thank you. That sounds exciting. I would look forward to hearing about these incentive programs to the landlords and encouraging engagement with more or new business. Alderman Diastis?
Thank you. Based on residents' requests, I would like to add a discussion item onto the March sixteenth draft Council meeting to discuss that the City Council return to in-session meetings beginning March twenty-third, provided COVID restrictions continue to be relaxed and the situation continues to improve.
So you're looking for a second to your motion to bring that forward, huh?
Sure.
Okay. Alderman O'Brien has the second there. There's now time for discussion. Regardless of what the outcome is, as the chairman of these meetings, and I dictate when we go back in to this environment, and my goal is to see more vaccination in the arms of residents, because genuinely, nothing has changed. We are showing a decrease in infection rate, but that doesn't mean anything if we can't get the vaccine distributed and increase the population that has that in order to make the next appropriate steps forward. And it goes back to the conversation, I don't care what other communities are doing, what schools are doing, I'm concerned about the well-being and best interest for this city and for the individuals who participate in physical proximity during these meetings under my control, and that's where it'll stay regardless, as the chairman who calls that. So is there any other discussion?
I would still like to have a discussion, since residents have brought it up to me and other members of the council.
I do want you to bring these residents' information. They don't have to be made public, but I would like to know these residents, their names, and if it's a genuine interest, they won't be afraid to discuss the reality.
That's not a problem. Dale Engelken came up last week and said it.
Of course, I know that, so thank you. Is there any other discussion on this? I see Alderman Budmats?
Yeah, just a question. I mean, right now, City Hall is open, residents want to come and listen to the meeting and comment in public at City Hall, they're welcome to, so is that correct?
Yes.
So then, I don't see a point in discussing it if the option's already available for those who want to choose it.
Thank you for sharing. Any other discussion on this? Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess just my question on that, too, is we can see, it looks like Alderman Diastis is at the City Hall this evening. Did we talk several months ago? No, I'm just wondering, because from a technology perspective, have you gotten any more information on that, Mr. Mayor? Because I know that was part of your apprehension. If we were to do a hybrid version, have you heard of any other impacts from that when you mentioned it?
Alderman O'Brien, I told you, from the start, a hybrid is not an option in my mind as you've heard the echo in Alderman Diastis's and his race to mute after he speaks. That's not what I'm interested in, in doing. We've been doing this since March thirteenth, and that was the first time there was a hybrid as a state of emergency call. That's not conducive. Residents can see our face on TV here. If they want to go to City Hall to participate in the meetings, they're more than welcome to sit in the chambers and participate. There are monitors on in there where they can see us right now in the meeting live. And so it has nothing to do with technology. It has to do with my concern and my decision to keep us as volunteers in physical distance as appropriate until enough vaccine is out in the community.
Thank you. I just know that we had as an open question from before and thought there might be some technology challenges. Thank you.
Yes, you're right. There are technology challenges with hybrid, and I won't do that. Alderman Sanoika?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Given that the council has unanimously approved, week after week, our state of emergency as a city, I think it would be inappropriate for us to meet in person. So I will be voting against this, this item for further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, let's be clear, this is not ideal. This isn't my ideal. I don't want to have to host City Council meetings from my office. I don't necessarily want to welcome the world into my backdrop. But I think it's the most appropriate for the times that we have. And yeah, I want to be back there. I want to be in physical proximity with everyone else. But in my opinion, and as chairman of these meetings and conducting these meetings, I don't feel it's appropriate yet. And that's, that's where I stand with this. Alderman Budmats, your hand is up for a last bite at the apple if it's not there from legacy. And since it is, if there isn't any further discussion, we'll go ahead and cast a vote on adding this subject to the March sixteenth Committee of the Whole. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats?
No.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
No.
Bessassi?
No.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanoika?
No.
McHale?
No.
Oh, that's two in favor, but five opposed, so that item will not be making its way to the March sixteenth Committee of the Whole Agenda. Are there other matters not on the agenda this evening? And if not, I would like to entertain a motion to go into closed session under Section two C one of the Open Meetings Act Regarding Personnel, and again, under Section two C eleven of the Open Meetings Act based on a finding that litigation against the city on certain matters is probable or imminent. And as you see here, this request to go into closed session is for those two matters. Do I have by show of hand a motion? I see Alderman Sanoika and Alderman McHale with the second. Is there any discussion on this matter to go into closed session? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien?
Yes.
Veneziano?
Yes.
Bessassi?
Yes.
Diastis?
Yes.
Sanoika?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Budmats?
Yes.
We have seven in favor and then opposed. We will now enter into closed session. The audience impressed. You all are advised that we do not anticipate taking any action upon returning to open session. So with that, I wish you a wonderful evening, council. Go ahead and disconnect and dial in on the closed session line, and we'll see you then.